I'm going to read my little cheat sheet here. Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. I'm Debbie Homewood, I'm serving as chair. A forum is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearing will be opened by reading the legal notice. We have one, right? Chair? One minute. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the board. The board members may ask questions of the applicant. Once the board has concluded its questioning, I'll open the hearing for public comment. All members in public attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name, address for the record, and speak loudly and clearly, please. All questions must be, and comments must be directed through the chair, and I will call upon board members and applicants as needed to respond. The board will then move into a period of deliberation, when we determine whether or not to close the public hearing, and moves to vote, or continue the public hearing to a later date. Before we begin, please remain respectful, the attendees, applicants, and staff, please be concise in your comments. Please turn off your cell phones, or silence refrain from side conversations. Okay, our first... Thank you. Our first agenda is... Site plan modification request, 1151 Boston Providence Highway FM Global.
Do the public hearing notice written, uh, read?
Is this a public hearing?
So there's two matters under consideration tonight.
Oh, one's a sign.
One is a request for site plan modification, and one is a public hearing for the signs.
Yep.
If I could make a recommendation that the board consider reading the legal notice into the record, and allowing the applicant to give a presentation on the entirety of the project, you'll just need to take two separate votes, but I see no reason why you can't accept a presentation on all matters before you would respect this property.
Okay, and who's our...
Rob, but he's not here, I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Sheehan is going to read the public notice.
Public hearing notice, Norwood Planning Board. Notice is hereby given that the planning board of the Norwood, of the town of Norwood, will hold a public hearing on April 28th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the request of Hobbs Brook Real Estate, LLC, regarding property located at 1125 to 1177 Boston Providence Turnpike, MAP 15, Block 15, Lot 7, and MAP 15, Block 13A, Lot 1A, Norwood, Mass., 02062, located in both the Boston Providence Highway, BPH, and Manufacturing M zoning districts. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation by Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Section 6.2.21, signs, special permit of the Norwood zoning bylaw to install signs that would exceed the maximum number permitted, maximum size permitted, and with interior illumination. The board will also review proposed amendments to the previously approved site plan pursuant to Section 10.5. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the planning board, and may be requested by emailing COMDEV@norwoodMA.gov, or by calling 781-762-1240, extension 6055, Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to... It doesn't matter what order we take them in, does it?
Um, no.
It's up to you. You want to do the modification or the signs first?
We're intending to present in an integrated fashion, so we're going to run through the site plan modifications and the signs, if that's okay with the board. We figured that way it was just a more cohesive look.
Perfect.
There's just two, two separate votes.
Yeah, two separate votes, but you're going to do a combo. Okay, perfect.
Chair Homewood, members of the board, my name is Jessica Comano. I'm here tonight from Gulson In-Stores as attorney on behalf of the applicant, FM. As Sarah has mentioned, we are here tonight regarding two matters related to FM's redevelopment of its campus that is located just off of Route 1, particularly the development of a new world-class research, science, and technology building, and the associated parking and landscaping with that project. Before diving into the specifics today, if we could go to the next slide, Sarah, I did want to pause for a moment just to introduce who from the project team is with me this evening. I'm joined by Greg LaRusso from Hobbs Brook and FM, who is the owner and applicant for the project, as well as Dylan O'Donnell from Apex Companies, who is our civil engineer, Laura Nosb from Ryan Associates, who is our landscape architect, and finally Cory D. Pasquale from Selbert Perkins Design, who is handling signage for the project. So if we could go to the next slide. As I mentioned, we are here tonight for two matters related to redevelopment of the campus. Firstly, we are seeking some minor modifications to the previously approved site plan, and secondly, we are here to get some special permits approved for proposed site identification signage. So first, with respect to the site plan, as you might recall, the site plan for this project was approved by this board back in May of 2023. Since then, FM has been diligently pursuing construction, finalizing design, working very closely with the building department, and in particular, the building commissioner, and as appropriate, other town departments. As a result of moving through design finalization and construction, there have been certain refinements that FM has identified that they would like to incorporate into the site plan. As you'll see tonight, these are largely functional enhancements that are going to result in better operations at the site, and ultimately upgrades to what was the prior civil design and landscape that was proposed. The ultimate intention of these improvements is really to result in a more durable and resilient site. FM itself has adopted some very stringent internal sustainability and resiliency standards that we are hoping to have incorporated throughout this site. As mentioned, while FM has been working closely with various town departments, we thought it was important to go ahead and provide a summary of the proposed modifications to this board, in light of giving the board the opportunity to ask any questions they may have, as well as updating the plan set that is on file with the town. Next, with respect to signage, as construction has progressed, FM has identified a proposed site identification signage package that they are seeking special permit relief for this evening. Specifically, we are seeking relief for five FM branded signs throughout the campus, four of which are monument signs, and one wall sign. As you'll see this evening, largely the need for relief here is rooted in the unique circumstances at this site. That is, this is really a campus for FM, so it is a very large lot with several buildings, making the need for multiple signs identifying FM necessary as throughout the lot, so that both at a pedestrian and a vehicular level, you're able to identify where the FM buildings are. Secondly, we are proposing some internal illumination on the monument signs, again, with the idea being a goal of efficient pedestrian and vehicular circulation throughout the site, throughout the day, as, you know, lighting may change. And finally, with respect to the Route 1 monument sign, we do require dimensional relief from this board. It's important to note that that Route 1 monument sign is a replacement of what was the existing FM Route 1 monument sign, so we are proposing a sign in the same location of comparable size to what existed, but it is upgraded to the new FM branding. The intention of that sign is really vehicular identification from Route 1, so in light of the rate of travel, the location of the site, the amount of frontage, the size of the campus, the spacing that already exists in the tree line that we are trying to preserve, we do think that the sign, despite requiring relief, is really appropriately sized and located here. So with that, I do want to take a moment first to thank this board for the cooperation over the years. I know that FM has been able to work very closely with the board and with the town departments, and we're excited to be here this evening to present these modifications. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dylan to now walk through our civil design updates. We will then go through our landscape updates to site plan, then turn it over to Cory to dig in on specifics for signage, and of course, we are more than happy to answer any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, for the record. Dylan O'Donnell with Apex Companies, project civil engineer. So I'd like to give a brief update on the construction of the project. So on the screen here, on the left-hand side, is an aerial imagery from 2022, which was before the project started, and on the right-hand side of the screen is an aerial image from March 10th of 2025. So obviously, construction's further along than March 10th, 2025, but this image still shows the new four-story, new lab and office building, as you can see on the bottom right-hand side of that right image there, and that's in place of the existing office building that has since been demolished. And then also, on the top left of the new aerial, you can see the precast parking garage, so that's also under construction, and construction continues on-site and is slated for completion in 2026. Next slide, please, Sarah. So before I dive into the civil design updates, one important point I just want to make is that I want to emphasize these updates represent improvements to the design that are typical of the construction process. They have no impact to the project's compliance with the zoning or parking requirements in Norwood. In other words, the project still complies with the zoning and parking requirements, just like it did when it received site plan approval in May 2023. So here again is the aerial imagery of the site from March 10th of this year. I labeled the existing buildings in yellow, and then the two new buildings in green. And as far as site civil design updates are related, I want to highlight three areas in particular. One is the hotel roadway between the new building in the center of the screen and the hotel. Second is updates to the service yard on the left-hand side of the screen there, just to the west of the new building. And then lastly is updates to the courtyard between the new building and the learning center, primarily stormwater updates in that area. All right, so starting with Area 1 here, the hotel roadway. So on the left is the previously approved plan from May of 2023, and then on the right is the updated plan, and we've color-coded the updates here just to make it clear. So starting with red, the red color represents the driveway that provides access to an executive parking garage on the lower level of the new building, and you can see on the image here that on the right, we've lengthened that driveway and shifted the throat of the driveway page north. The reason we did that is because the previously approved location was at a localized low point on-site, so it was potentially exposed to ponding during extreme storm events. So in order to improve the garage's resilience to extreme storm events and to align with FM standards pertaining to prevent loss prevention, we shifted that throat of the driveway page north to a higher elevation to protect the garage. Moving on to blue, the blue color represents the roadway between the new building and the hotel, and you can see on the right-hand side, we softened the horizontal curves of that roadway, and the purpose was just to accommodate large vehicle delivery, large vehicle deliveries on-site. Moving on to green, the green color shows parking in this area. We modified the parking spaces to reflect this new roadway layout between the hotel and the building. We also added some EV spaces. Just want to emphasize that the total number of parking spaces on-site is, remains unchanged. We still have the same from the approved plan in May of 2023. Lastly, the yellow color represents just modifications to the sidewalks in this area, which just improved pedestrian circulation and accessibility on-site. So moving on to Area 2, which again is the utility service yard and loading dock west of the new building. In green, we have the cylinder shed and the generator, so we relocated these to be further away from the buildings, and the reason is we wanted to comply with FM risk management requirements for fuel storage. The blue represents the utility yard itself, which houses transformers, a switchgear, and a trash compactor, and you can see on the right-hand side that we just slightly reorganized the configuration of these to consolidate space and to improve functionality in this area. And lastly, the yellow represents updates to parking and loading. Some parking spaces in this area were relocated elsewhere on-site to facilitate delivery, truck maneuvers in this area, and the striped loading zone that you can see on the right-hand side as well. Moving on to Area 3, this is the courtyard between the new building and the FM Learning Center. So we've made updates and improvements to the stormwater system in this area to align with FM's internal guidelines, which establish flood resilience standards that are more stringent than both Mass DEP stormwater standards and Town of Norwood stormwater standards. Therefore, the stormwater design is similar to what was previously approved, but it's been expanded just to function at a slightly higher level. So the green represents underground stormwater infiltration systems. You can see on the left with the previously approved plan, we had one large system, but because we increased the capacity of the system, we split it up into two separate systems connected hydraulically by a pipe. And then lastly, in blue, you'll see a new vegetated swale that was added to this courtyard area. Again, this swale was added in response to FM's internal flood resilience standards. It's a belt and suspenders approach that's in addition to the already approved stormwater management system in this area, and its main purpose is to promote positive drainage away from the buildings during extreme storm events. And that concludes the site civil updates, and I'll turn it over to Laura for landscape updates.
Thanks, Dylan. Hello, my name is Laura Nosb. I'm a landscape architect with Ryan Associates, and as Dylan has explained, we have made some modifications to the site. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please. The area I wanted to talk about today is the large meadow that's on Route 1. We've been calling it the Great Meadow, so it's great. And everything needs a name, right? And if you could go to the next slide, what was previously approved was on the left, and this was sort of amorphous retention basin, excuse me, infiltration basin. The change that we have made is that we have increased the capacity of that slightly, and we've mostly for aesthetic reasons changed the approach to this area in terms of the grading. So if you can see on the left-hand side, there were a number of these small mounds. We've made this more of a rolling naturalistic meadow with larger mounds that are more gentle. We had also had in the permitted drawings, a yellow line there that was called out as a boardwalk. If you actually look at the kind of updated grading, we only have what we would consider a boardwalk, which is elevated, which is shown in the yellow over the blue area, and the rest is a pervious walkway. In addition, we have made two pedestrian connections from the site to Route 1. Those are highlighted in green on the left and the right of the Great Meadow. If you could go to the next slide, please. As the project has developed, one of the things that we've focused a lot of our energy on are the planting updates. The initial plans were relatively modest in terms of the planting, but for a project of this caliber, we really wanted to enhance the planting significantly, so we've increased the number of trees by more than 50%. The diversity of the trees have doubled. We're using all native species, all of the planting, and the whole project is native species. We've included a large number of understory and flowering trees. This is to provide seasonal interest and also to provide pollinator habitat and resources for insects and birds earlier in the season. The shrubs we've increased by more than 400% and doubled the diversity. The meadow areas have been further refined, so we now have a couple of different types of meadow, depending on where there's sun, where there's shades. We've really dialed that in to make it more compatible with the on-ground conditions. To that increases biodiversity, increases pollinator habitat, and also decreases the long-term need for irrigation and maintenance. And lastly, we've incorporated a large, some large areas of ornamental grasses to distinguish the primary pedestrian areas on-site. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cory.
Good evening, folks. For the record, Cory D. Pasquale, Selbert Perkins Design, design director for our office. Very honored to be here tonight representing FM. It's a truly wonderful company, and happy to be here with my peers representing it today for you. We're going to be talking about the signage, which in light of that, we're talking about recognizing a beautiful building that's going to be part of Norwood's infrastructure and part of the network that they have, and we want to be providing really beautiful signs for it for recognition. We're going to be talking about five sign types today. There are three exterior freestanding monuments. There is one wall sign located on the eastern facade of the building, and there is one vehicular directional located on plan north, what would be actual compass rose west, coming on FM Global Way. Next slide. This is our primary freestanding monument sign. This is located on Route 1, and this is proposed to replace the former non-conforming sign on Route 1. Given the context of the site around the location, we're proposing it at the current dimensions shown on screen here. This is an overall 10-foot-high sign by 11 feet wide. The face of the sign is actually seven feet high, so we're actually at 77 feet, or square feet, if you're considering the face of the sign. This is internally illuminated. Around the FM logo itself is a soft orange glow. There is no flood lighting on-site that will be illuminating this, so we're actually providing less illumination for dark sky reasons, et cetera, but still giving the site and the sign proper illumination so it could be viewed at speed on Route 1. The next two freestanding monument signs are on the north and south pedestrian entries of the building. There are no large on-sign or on-building signs from those entries, those pedestrian entries, so we've opted for a smaller pedestrian sign that's freestanding. These are also internally illuminated. These are not floodlit. What we're seeing here is the exterior facade sign, so this is 122 square foot. This is on the eastern facade facing Route 1. This we're seeking, we are not seeking relief on the allowable square footage on. This is actually conforming. This is related to illumination. And the final sign that we're proposing today is a vehicular directional sign on FM Global Way. We're viewing this sign as necessary for traffic flow. If you are to enter the site directly through this intersection and proceed straight, you would enter FM's loading dock for the new building, so we're looking for this sign to directionally route traffic around the site. Given that it is a campus, we want to have that sign direct folks to the parking garage that will be entering that way. We've done some internal surveying with the FM staff, and we've determined that about 60% of their folks are going to be coming in from that direction, so we want to address vehicular traffic here. Should they want to head to any of the other elements of the site, like the hotel, et cetera, this would be the opportunity for us to engage with those folks that are in cars, so we want to make sure that we're sorting people around the site directly. All right. Thank you, folks.
Any questions and comments from the board? I'm happy to stand up here and field questions to team members.
Okay, we'll start with Joe.
I just have a question on the coming in from Pleasant Street. You can still come in there and, in and out of there?
Yes.
And if you go into Atrius, you can, it wraps around the building and comes through?
Correct. We took the old street, used to almost be a little bit of a drag strip through the site, so if you guys remember the early presentations, sorry, Greg LaRusso from Hobbs Brook. If you remember the early presentations, we actually are focused on a campus-friendly site, focused on pedestrians, so you absolutely can. You take, if you're coming down FM Global Way, you take a right and go around the garage to get to Atrius, and that brings you back to exactly where it was, or you pick left, and that brings you over to the hotel. So it still goes around the property, it's just not that straight line that cut through before.
Yeah, I recall that, that's great. Just on the businesses of FM, you talked about risk management, that's kind of their business, I would say.
Correct.
They must have a great effect on this, because all these upgrades look like they're there for safety and to prevent things from happening. When you talked about the garage that goes down and under, we had our own fiasco with something that did something similar, where it did flood, and it's, I'm glad to see someone's ahead on that. So they all look like great improvements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brian?
Just curious about the illumination. Is that 24, is that throughout the night, or was the, what would you expect the illumination of the signs to be?
They're controlled. There's onboard controllers in the signs that have controlled them for an hour. Typically, we shut, we go by ordinance on that.
Oh.
I know that there was a request specifically related to the sign that is located on FM Global Way, as that is more proximate to a residential location, and we were comfortable with planning staff's suggestion that that sign in particular not be eliminated from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. We were comfortable with that. From an operational perspective, it works, given that it is more of an ingress-and-egress for regular hours at the site, but given as well, as Cory described, this is all internal halo illumination, so we're not talking bright spotlights that are coming at the signs. It's really a pretty subtle identification piece, so.
If you look at those signs, the FM is basically meant to be a titanium metal, or almost looks like stainless steel to a certain degree, and then the blue is also opaque, so really, it is purely that orange glow around the light, all around the FM. So there is no outside light, so it, we feel it's pretty subtle, and actually should fit elegant and nicely with the sign. And that goes, that holds true for all those signs that you saw there.
All right.
Just on the hotel roadway, are we, just for my own, are we talking about the road that comes in, and it goes in front of like the entrance to the Four Points Ballroom?
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of a sharp turn there.
Correct.
By changing that, are you screwing up that entranceway or?
No, actually, we're smoothing it out. It's not as sharp. So the drive, actually Dylan's presented, present, sorry, presentation slide there, it's still the same drive, we're just taking, it's probably a larger radius. So we're smoothing the curve out, because as you noted, it wasn't very sharp.
Yeah, we're going to go by the entranceway, and there's a little circle there or something.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's great. The monument sign on Route 1, you're basically replicating the location and the size of what it was.
Correct.
Right, thank you, because if you were trying to, you know, go against the bylaw now, we'd have everybody on Route 1 would be in here saying, hey, hey, hey.
Exactly, and so it was a pre-existing non-conforming sign, and we're proposing a replacement of it.
You're putting, replacing what was there, that's fine.
Yes.
Everything else is, I have no problem with anything else you're doing. What I have, oh, any, the retaining basin that you're doing some work in, you're making it a little bigger, I mean, is that a, do you have to go through Conservation Commission on that for anything, or no?
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes as far as the water or?
It's just the shape.
Flow or anything like that, great. So I have no problem with anything you're doing, I think it's all great, and once again, you guys, whoever designs your plans and presentations should give courses in it, because in my 25 years here, FM Global's had the best plans and presentation of anybody. Thank you for making it very easy to figure out.
You're not asking about your tulips?
What's that?
You're not asking about your tulips?
Oh, well, tulips, they're gone, I think. Beautiful yellow daffodils, where are the yellow tulips all over?
Got more, right?
I missed them. Anyway, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
What is a boardwalk?
What is the boardwalk? So it's a raised.
Like a boardwalk?
With a wooden deck.
So you've got that in the front?
Yep, and it goes over the kind of deepest part of the infiltration basin.
Okay.
Yep.
And 2026, beginning, middle, end, any idea?
Somewhere in the middle. I mean, we've still got another year to go, so as long as Mother Nature doesn't throw us any curveballs, you know, that's what we're striving for.
Okay, and inside the monument, so I have a question about FM Global, which, the FM Global Way. I've always had a question about this. Where, that's a town road, correct?
Yes, so FM Global Way is a town-owned public way. However, FM, with respect to the portion that is interior to the gate that exists on FM Global Way, has largely operated to maintain that portion of FM Global Way as part of the campus. So we are actually in the process of entering into a license agreement with the Board of Selectmen to memorialize those maintenance activities, as well as the signage that is being proposed within that small portion of FM Global Way, only within that portion that is interior to the gate.
So the gate's going to stay where the gate stays?
Correct. Nothing is going to change really from what it looks like operationally, it will just be papered officially with the Board of Selectmen as to how that operates.
And what's the deal with the gate? Who opens, closes?
Our security opens and closes that, because it was basically, I believe, we're trying to minimize from a security point of view.
Right.
People going through there at odd hours, so, and I don't know any of that from hours of operation, yes, if that's being included in the license or anything, but we maintain that, and we open it and close that, because I think all of us have been there, like, when the hotel events are open, then they keep it open. there, like weekend, when the hotel events are open, then they keep it open. But during off-hours, you know, it's just meant to mitigate security issues of people going through there at very weird times.
Okay. Because it doesn't seem to be a rhyme or reason.
Well, years ago, Debbie, years ago, people would, there was a cut-through to get out to Route 1.
Correct.
The people would cut through there instead of going all the way down, the lights at Dean Street, all that. They would just cut through FM, FM Road, as we call it, cut through the parking lots and they could bang right out onto Route 1.
And it was kind of dangerous because the speed of people that were cutting through there, because that was that straight line that we have now gone around some of the buildings and made sure that the center is pedestrian-friendly. So fundamentally, if people were to be doing that, they need to be doing it slower anyways. But that was the reason why we actually changed that road because it was.
Well, the other night when we were all leaving the hotel, it was later, and we all, we're all following, you know, a bunch of four people, and it was closed and the light, anyway.
So you're just, what the rationale are, their stated hours?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, are there stated hours? No, I wasn't cutting through.
He was just following.
Not that I couldn't cut through, okay?
Glad to see we made it home in here today.
So the, that's controlled by FM Global, that gate. So you're, you open it in the morning, you close it at, what, what time do you guys close it?
I actually don't know offhand. I could find that out, but I don't know.
No, okay. And the Route 1 sign is just going to be what it is?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that was it, except I love your landscape. I would be remiss if I didn't say, yeah. Okay. And.
Debbie, get public comments.
Yep. Okay. Is there anybody on the board that wants to?
Anybody online?
Oh, anybody online? No? Anybody in the audience that would like to? No? They did all this work? We have many questions.
Chairman, I'll make that motion if it's so be it, the closed public hearing.
Okay, there's a first and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So it's, public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have a? We can't do it. I can't make a, we're going to go first with? Go ahead, sorry.
I just wanted to draw your attention to some recommended conditions of approval with respect to the sign application. As you just discussed, there's a process, licensing agreement that's in process with the Board of Selectmen to kind of memorialize control over the land surrounding FM Global Way. Since at least one of the signs that are proposed are proposed to be on that land, which technically is considered an off-site location, we do recommend a condition of approval that allow for installation of that sign only once that agreement has been secured with the Board of Selectmen. Essentially just giving permission for the company to install a sign on town property.
So they do that after, if we go ahead, then they go in front of the Selectmen?
The condition of approval would allow you to, you know, render a decision on this tonight and give them the time that they need to complete that process with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. That's one of the, one of the recommendations, summary recommendation?
On the first, I'll make the first motion to approve the site modifications.
Okay. I'll do that one first. Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. So any recommendations on the site modification? Or we're just doing them on the signs? Sarah?
The motion's just for the site plan modification.
Okay.
Site plan modification, right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions?
Just if there were any conditions on that.
Yeah, no, no conditions. Okay. Unanimous. Now we need a motion for the signs. I can't make it right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site, the south case of the sign, subject to the proposed conditions, which include the issue that the sign on FM Global Way only be replaced once the deal with the Board of Selectmen is finalized, subject to illumination as applicable, and that the monument sign be placed far enough away from the front setback to conform with size requirements. Is there anything?
If I may, with, just if I may, with respect to that condition, that refers to the Route 1 monument sign, I believe, Sarah, in the recommendations. So what we are proposing is larger than what is allowed under the dimensions and zoning, but is consistent with what previously existed. So the sign as designed would require dimensional relief, would not be consistent with what is allowed dimensionally, so.
Were you referring to the Light Department's requirements?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was reading the proposed conditions here.
And with respect to Light Department?
Is a height issue, which this does not.
We also spoke with the Light Department, yep, since receiving that comment letter, we were able to speak directly to the Light Department. So if I might make a recommendation, the Light Department was open rather to requiring 18 feet horizontally as between overhead lines and the sign. They were open to a 10-foot distance. For the purposes of this hearing, Sarah, Chair Holmwood, if it makes sense to you, a condition that we might suggest is that final location of that Route 1 monument sign be approved by the Light Department and the plans be updated to the extent we have to adjust the location at all to satisfy any concerns from the Light Department. At this time, we don't anticipate that we will need to shift the sign at all based on the conversation that we had earlier today, but we would be fine agreeing to that condition.
So what you're saying is the sign's 10 feet and the Light Department's concerned about where the wires are?
No, so it's a matter of, the Light Department's concern is a horizontal distance from the overhead wires to the location of the sign itself. Horizontal distance, not distance from the top of the sign to the location of the overhead wire.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I can, I can only assume that that would be for access to the wires.
It's the, exactly. It's the installation and the maintenance that they're concerned about. So feel free if I've gone astray at all here in the technical piece.
No, you have it right. I spoke with, with Dan Morrissey from Norwood Light this afternoon, and he basically said just that, that is the horizontal distance. And he said that he's amenable to a 10-foot horizontal distance between the overhead wires and the signage.
Which, what is it usually?
So the original requirement was 18 feet, and he told me that that was adapted, that was adapted from a federal regulation, and that a federal regulation has since updated to 10 feet. So he said that he's amenable to just maintaining the 10-feet horizontal distance between the overhead wires and the sign.
Okay.
So far, it's cleaning up my motion. I will draw the motion, reoffer it if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd make a motion, Madam Chair, to recommend approval of the sign, first condition being subject to finalization of the deal with the Board of Selectmen, and then the, subject to the timing considerations set forth in the bylaw, and then any, consistent with any other issues pertaining to setbacks with other town departments. Is that fair enough?
You can be specific, the Light Department.
Light Department.
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay. Seconded. Any, any further questions? I have one, one further question. So it's not the sign recommendation summary. We've got six of them, but we're adding the seventh due to the Electric Department under recommendations from.
It's a modification to the.
Just the location is the, is the.
Which one is it?
That one. So instead of, it's.
Front setback reduced and conform with monument sign size required. Where does it say the Light Department?
Yes. No, to be clear, I believe that, I don't have those, I'm not entirely certain what the board is looking at, but if it is the recommendations that came through from ILEX in the Community Development Department, I do believe ILEX had suggested reduction of the overall size of the sign, which we are not proposing to reduce the proposed size of the sign. So.
And that wasn't in the motion?
That's not in the.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify.
Build it to the, to the size they've requested.
Yes.
Perfect. Great. All of the other recommendations that were in ILEX's memo, we were comfortable with, with the exception of the suggestion that we reduce the size of the sign.
So this is specific to the horizontal setback of the front monument sign to the satisfaction of the Light Department.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's a second? Second by Ernie. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much again for your cooperation. We appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Leave that landscape lady here with me.
You're your best friend.
Yeah. They're just not as pretty. Okay. Modification to site plan approval, 707 Naponton Street. Mr. Hearn?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Well, the record, David Hearn Jr. of Gallimard and Cabral, on behalf of the Gusson William Realty LLC, which is the owner of the property of 707 Naponton Street, more commonly known as Norwood Gulf. We're here before you for a couple of matters relating to the site plan approval that this board approved about two years ago. And we have requested a couple of modifications to the prior decision. One is, and let me actually distribute this, because I sent electronic version, but I was trying to get copies. We had a meeting today related to this. Look at this, look at this. Oh, God. Revision date. It has to do with, I'll point it out to all of you, but.
Thank you.
So the plan that I just gave you a copy of has a revision date of February 3, 2025. And the change is the area, this has to do not really with you folks because it's not subject to site plan approval, but just so that you have it in front of you, the plan that we're using. There was an area that was shown on the original zoning board plan, the one that was filed as possibly being an open area, and we have decided that it will be enclosed with walls. And so what was shown as a canopy is now part of the proposed building addition. But the building has nothing to do with site plan approval, that addition, nor the prior addition a couple of years ago. What we're looking for, and what our application is for, is for modification of the layout of three parking spaces that are against the building, or against the right-hand side of the building as you look at the building from Naponton Street. There are two handicapped spaces and one short-term parking space that originally were laid out to angle in to the side of the building, to go straight onto the building. In the course of the construction work that was authorized by the zoning board and authorized by your site plan approval in 2023, the, it was determined that those spaces, because of grade issues and the angle of them would not, as well as some, it was an issue with the curb, would not work as well as had been hoped. And there were discussions among the development team and with Mark Schubert, who was one of the local business, building inspectors who was on the site reviewing some of the construction. And as a result of that conversation, it was determined to shift the parking spots that we're talking about, the two handicapped and the one short-term, shift those 90 degrees so that they come in straight from, still to the right of the building, but instead of pointing toward the side wall of the building, they are pointing back from Naponton Street toward the back of the existing, of the buildings. And those gave a better ramp for the handicapped access and better layout. It didn't involve any more asphalt or anything like that. That change was made, and it should have been brought to the attention of, it was brought to the attention, or the local inspector was involved in it, but there was no formal request made to modify the plans that had been approved by this board. And it came up as an issue when the Building Department was reviewing the plans related to our pending zoning board proceedings, which have to do with a proposed addition on the back of the building that's shown on this plan. So that's the first thing, dealing with parking that was shifted 90 degrees, didn't change the number of spaces or anything like that, but it was to get a better result. Tim Power, who's our engineer, can speak to that probably in greater detail than I can. The other change is a proposed modification, is a request to delete from the decision any reference to a building addition. My client, in early 2023, when we filed for the site plan approval, we showed the outline on the, on the plans of a building addition that my client was thinking about for waiting room and service write-up area and all that. And I made it clear at the time of the presentation, and if need be, we can show the tape tonight, but I made it clear in the presentation, we were not asking for your approval with respect to the building, we were not asking for site plan approval with respect to the building. The proposed addition did not trigger site plan approval. That was a separate matter that we were going to bring, possibly bring to the zoning board for extension of a nonconforming use sometime in the future. But because it was under discussion internally, we had an outline of it on the plan. I think that led to some confusion, and your decision references a building, and we've been told that the building doesn't conform to the site plan approval. And I don't think it does because the plan, the building that was actually built conforms to all the architectural drawings that we gave to the zoning board subsequently. There was an error on the cover sheet of the submission to the zoning board. It still had that old lay, outline, that wasn't accurate. But all the architectural plans and renderings were accurate, and all the building permit plans were accurate as to what we were building. That was built, and now we've been told there's an issue about it, and that we're not in compliance, can't get a, we don't have a certificate of occupancy for that. So we would like the second modification to strike from your decision, any reference to the building addition that was approved by the zoning board later in 2023. It was not part of the zoning board's decision at the end of 2022, beginning of 2023. It's not part of your site plan approval, and I think you know, we generally go to the zoning board for discretionary approvals before we come here for site plan. There's no point to doing all the work for site plan approval until you know whether the zoning board will grant the special permit relief that is necessary for the type of changes we were proposing. So we want to take the building out of it. There's a third issue that relates to landscaping. We acknowledge, and we've acknowledged this in various communications with the Planning Department and the Building Department, that the landscaping has not been completed in strict compliance with the terms of the site plan decision and the landscaping requirements of that decision. Part of the problem with that, it wasn't any bad intent on the part of my client, part of the problem was some of the plants that were called for in the approved landscape plan weren't available. He put stuff into, he says, I think he put more in that was rarely required in some things, but not all of it complied. He has, with the onset of spring, been working vigorously to get that up to date, and I think Tim Power can speak to that because he's been keeping an eye on it, give some sort of a report. We had a, in a meeting we had today with some of the department heads and the planning staff, we discussed that when all is said and done, we will get a landscape architect who's already been out to look at it and make recommendations to sign off and certify the plantings, that they will be in compliance with that site plan decision. We need to tie up these loose ends in order to close things out with the Building Department and get the certificate of occupancy once and for all. So that's really what we're dealing with. I will say, there's one other thing that came up in the conversation today when we had the meeting with the department heads, and that is that there has been at times concern about an area on the, right along the Naponton Street sidewalk where people sit in their cars waiting to get their inspections done. They're not really, you know, I think of parking as you move the car in, turn off the car and leave the car, but these are people who are waiting for their inspections. There has been an issue that at times they have gone over. There has been an issue that at times they have gone over the boundary line. We had, at one point, we had put, marked some spaces there to keep them focused on where they're supposed to be, still hasn't worked. So the discussion we had this afternoon that I think met with the approval of the fire department from a safety point of view, and I think from the point of view of the building commissioner and the director of the DPW, Mr. Ryan, is that we are going to look at, if, if we want to continue using that, we're going to look at coming up with some sort of a curb, a low curb that will keep people from, if they're there, from swinging out onto the actual sidewalk. We're looking at that, and I would ask that if you're able to approve these things, it might make that a condition that it has to be to satisfaction of the department heads involved, particularly fire department and DPW because it involves the roadway and the right-of-way of the sidewalk and the, which is much wider than required, that particular sidewalk. But as the fire department pointed out, it's better to have something there so that people don't drive through it thinking it's driveway when part of it is sidewalk. I think, we think it's about eight feet wide when a sidewalk normally would be four feet wide. So we need, we propose, we haven't worked out the details, but if you authorize it, we would work out the details to the satisfaction of those department heads. Some sort of a low curb to keep people from going outside of the property when they're, when they're there waiting for inspections. Those are the issues as I see it. The, the plantings have to be completed, and we're hoping they'll be completed this week. And then we'll get the landscape architect to certify to them. The 90-degree rearrangement of the, of three parking spaces in a way that works better. I'm asking for the removal of any reference to the building. I'd make it clear, the building was not part of site plan approval. And it didn't, wasn't necessary for it, isn't necessary for it now. And authorization with respect to that area out in front along the Napont Street sidewalk. So that's where we are. You have the plan in front of you. The parking spaces in question are shown on the, I gotta get the right orientation. You can see the wheelchair symbols, and there is one more space there. Tim has drawn all this out and can explain it better than I can. That's what we're here for, Madam Chair. I'm happy to take questions. And if you want Mr. Power to come up, he will come up and probably answer them better than I can.
That's what we do.
Put him on the spot, didn't I?
I'd like Mr. Power to come up and...
Sure. Mr. Mason, let's hang down.
Oh, yeah. Which one is more accurate with the parking? Because this one that you gave us tonight, please let me finish. This one that you gave us tonight shows two. This one that came in our package shows three.
David, that's a great place to start.
Tim's gonna find out.
Yes.
Yeah. But the one that you have with that one that I gave tonight has the revision date of February 3. That's what we wanted to get before you.
I gotta, I gotta clarify that, sorry. The plan David gave you tonight is the, was the latest plan submitted to the ZBA for the expansion shown there. Since submitting that, some of these other issues came to light. So I would like to move back to, I believe that's the other plan. And I don't, do you have the overlay plans?
What's up here is what, what attorney handed out to the board this evening.
Correct.
Prior plan.
For the, for what we submitted for this hearing.
For April.
This one, was it our, this one?
Second.
Yes, has the red overlayed. I'll be able to speak to you. So I think the, the plan...
This one says April 2nd.
The plan, I'm gonna start at the end tonight and move backwards for a minute. The plan Mr. Hearn gave you tonight is in relation to the next step that we're, this applicant is looking to do. Sort of as a matter of keeping the board informed of what's coming down the road. But for now, I think you can put it aside. We're gonna go back in time now to the changes that were made and what was done. I don't know if you can pan right.
So Mr. Power, just so I'm clear, you want us to go back to the plan that says April 2, 2025?
Yes, with the red overlay.
Okay. So this one we're gonna hold off on, and this is the one we're going to...
Talk about tonight.
Okay. Yep, we're good?
Yes. See if Sarah can bring it up too, that way I can speak to it.
It's just taking a little...
No worries. Keep down to the right, keep it down. I don't know how to get an old tree dot there. Perfect.
Sorry about that.
Great, no problem. This is actually perfect.
Just so everybody on line can follow along?
Great.
All right, go ahead.
So this plan represents sort of what we're asking for tonight. As, if you recall, we came in for a site plan approval for the parking lot, shown in gray on the right side of this plan. In red is what was originally approved for the handicap parking. As you can see, it's head into the building. During construction, they realized there was some issues making that curb cut. And also, the concrete surface where you drive on is actually sloped fairly dramatically, I think because of the tanks and how they connected it. So the handicap space in red on the bottom of this page wouldn't really be compliant. And I'm sure there's language in the ADA code that if you don't have any, then anything is better than nothing. But when looking at it between that and the curb cut, it made sense to turn this 90 degrees, build the ramp out as it extends away from the building. And that allowed what you see in black to be created, where we have the one short-term space up against the building, handicap space, the loading zone, and another second handicap space. All of that is reasonably level, a better solution for ADA compliance and easier access. The new door into the new addition is a better access point into the building. Anyway, for accessibility, so this, this plan just worked out nicer. So that's modification number, number one, sort of the biggest actual change that's there. Number two, you can see on this plan, there is no other building addition proposed, even the one that just recently built. As David put it, that wasn't intended to be part of the site plan approval. It's becoming an issue to close out this process. So just, we've taken that off of this plan as part of the site plan review for the parking lot is concerned. So those are the two main modifications. The third aspect was the landscaping. We had presented a landscape plan that showed the approved plan, what was actually installed, and then some proposed modifications. The applicant is actually really withdrawing that request. He's actually actively installing the plants as originally approved now. They've been going in today and should be done in about a week. So circling back, we don't really need any modification relating to landscaping. Everything will be installed for the plan, plus some. As David said, he tried to do his own replacements last year or when he first did the installation. So he now has more plants than required. So there's a couple trees, pears, that aren't allowed by normal code. Those will be pulled out and replaced with the elms that were originally specified. And then everything else should be infilled as needed. So those are the three technical aspects of the modification. Happy to take more questions.
Okay. I'll open up to the board. Ernie?
I'll start. What year did we approve the site plan approval?
23.
23.
Yeah.
Beginning.
And so this is the summer of '25. So we, we went through a whole planting season last year, and we did nothing. We didn't realize that the, that the plants were unavailable last year? I'm, I'm just, you, you had mentioned that due to circumstances that plants weren't available.
Right.
When we...
When was the work done last year?
I believe it was done last year. And it wasn't that he, he didn't put it in, it's that he, they weren't available where he went. And so he replaced it on his own. And so now we're just catching up to close out that, hey, these don't comply with what was planted.
That was the first planting area.
Was last year?
Yeah, because this got approved later in the year.
All right. I just wanted to see if we went through a whole planting season.
We're in the spring of, we're in the spring now, and this is the first opportunity for weather to work on it.
So are all the plants on Ridge Road that are shown from, on the site plan, are they all, are they gonna be in compliance now?
Yes. Yes.
I have gotten some people from Ridge Road that, normally Debbie gets all the calls. This is the time I get the calls.
Really? I love that.
People on Ridge Road that, that, you know, it's the, once, once those original trees came down, the lights now in their living room and the, you know, trees weren't replaced and things like that. So Mr. Power, you're a bit engineer. So the new location of the handicap spots coming straight in off of Napont Street?
Yeah.
I'm looking on the map, is this the, is this the, this dotted square, is that the tank area? Is that, is that the?
That's the canopy.
That's the canopies.
Yep, yep, canopy and, yes, pumps.
Okay. Is it, I've been down there, it's always busy. Is, I think originally it was easier for people to come in off of Napont Street and take a left into those spots. Is it gonna be kind of difficult to, to come in and bang, bang a left around the canopy and, you know, people waiting to get gas? And then try to pull into those handicap? You're gonna have cars, I don't know. Can you tell me if there's enough room there for somebody to come in off of Napont Street? Normally that lane is, is heading towards the circle of cars. Go around those cars waiting for gas and then pull into those? Are there, is there enough room and radius for somebody with a handicap van or something to make that S, that hard S turn?
Yeah, yes, especially for the handicap. I think there's definitely enough room. The one short-term parking space there is probably the one that's most pinched. With the handicap, don't forget you have the, actually, we provide a 10-foot aisle.
Wider, wider aisles.
Right, so they can, they can go in there. But there is enough, you know, if someone comes in with a Cadillac Escalade, they may have to wait for someone to move from the pump to get all the way out. But a normal car can, can squeeze in and out. I actually did it today. My Ford Explorer was able to pull in.
You know, it's, it is tight in there. And I'm, I'm only looking, I'm saying, somebody's trying to back out, and you got people in line for gas there, and it's, it's tight. You know, I've been in there. And what C, what certificate of occupancy were waiting for?
For the, for the addition. I don't know, like David, so we did...
The addition that was built.
You mean the little sitting room and all that in the back?
Yeah.
Yes, people sit back there all the time.
They do, but we have to get a final certificate of occupancy.
So...
And, and the building commissioner has, you know, wants us to get these other conditions checked off before he'll sign off on that.
Okay.
That was part of the zoning board decision, again, not part of your decision.
And I'm just gonna ask Sarah a question, and Sarah, I'll put you on the spot. But the removal of the language referencing the addition from the site plan, is, is there any issues there that, that I'm missing? I mean, the site plan was not, that was not included in that, right? Or...
Not supposed to.
I think that's an issue of contention. It seems as though that was not the applicant's intent. I think that's at the discretion of the board, how it wants to handle that request. I personally am of the opinion that the process at this point to bring everything into compliance is, everybody's on the right track in getting the squared way to move forward.
Would be to remove the, you just wanna remove the reference from the decision of that? Maybe Attorney Hearn, if you could just rego over what, what, what you're asking as far as the removal of the wording of the building?
Well, either removal of it or a, a new statement to be added as a modification to the decision to state that this decision in no way affects or concerns the addition that was built in 2023, 2024, the so-called waiting room service write-up area. We can show the tape tonight, but I don't know if you want to watch yourselves from two years ago, when I made it clear at this meeting that there is an outline shown on the plan that you're looking at, but we are not asking for any relief on that. That particular building addition did not trigger site plan approval, nor does the other one that we're with the zoning board on, going back to them next week, doesn't trigger site plan approval. The reason I don't, I mean, there are various reasons why I don't want. I want it to be, to reflect what actually we asked for and what I made clear at the, at the actual hearing. I also don't want to have a building subject to site plan approval conditions that wasn't supposed to be subject to site plan approval conditions. And that we stated, we didn't want to, you know, we weren't submitting for a site plan. This, it was a mistake on our part, I think, to have it shown on the plan. We were trying to show it to you as, hey, just so you know, when you're thinking about authorizing or giving a site plan approval for the parking area that's expanding, that the zoning board had approved, we want you to know we're thinking about adding on to the building, and this transparency. But the problem is, it kind of got into the decision. So I would ask for a modification that says that any reference to that building is no longer in effect, and, and that that building, that addition to the building is not part of the site plan decision. Otherwise, we're bound by the site plan decision with respect to that part of the project, and we shouldn't be.
So if that was removed, it would be basically a handle foul because it really wasn't part of the...
Or, or if we leave it in, but we don't have any movement on it?
Well, I think they're asking for some kind of movement.
Well, you leave it in.
Either remove it or a note, a note that says it's not part of, I think that's what the applicant...
Okay, leave it in and say...
If you, if you leave it in without the modification that we're requesting, then your successors will believe that they have a, the right to control that building under site plan approval. And any, anything that they don't like, it, it isn't, it isn't supposed to be subject to your jurisdiction. It, under the site plan approval, site plan review rules.
Okay.
It doesn't fall in your jurisdiction.
Okay. Are you, you have another?
No, I think, I understand what Attorney Hearn is asking for, that...
I, I do also. And if that's not part of our, then I would like to move on with the, part of the questions that are part of our decision from '20.
But as part of your, it's, I'm asking it to be part of your decision to take it out in some fashion, to make the decision, a modified decision clear that that building was not intended to be and is not subject to the site plan decision. That's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
On the law, it would not trigger site plan approval.
Yeah.
Right. And again, there's two definite schools of thought on it. But can we move on to what we actually? Do you have any other questions on that one? I think we're gonna vote on that. Any questions?
No, on the other ones, um...
Yeah, we would, we'll go on to the other ones, you know.
Okay.
And that's all I had to say on that one, and same with Tim, I think. So, you want him?
So what we can actually was in our decision from 2023.
What was?
Some of the questions that were in our decision from 2023 was, you know, it's my understanding that this whole thing from 1965, when they made the decision to put a gas station in a residential neighborhood, that one of the major caveats in 1965 was, we're putting a gas station in a residential neighborhood, the buffer needs to remain. Now, I'm sure the buffer wasn't the buffer of the trees. I have, I don't know if that's the case, but I'm gonna assume that that was the case. And one of the things in our decision, and I remember because I beat it to death, was, yes, you're gonna put more parking, we wanted trees, we wanted a little grass, and play the tape. That buffer behind and on the side, which is, I believe that he's got his right to, I mean, he's got a great business there. But the neighbors have a right to some kind of buffer. And they took down the, they took down the trees. They took down the trees in the back. And I'm, I'm completely verklempt about this. I'm completely like, we, we went over this ad nauseam. He took down 30-foot trees that, that the people in the back and the whole street over there are now calling. And, and I think they have a right to that because it was in our decision that the current landscaping was to stay.
I don't know that we've done anything, the, the only violation that I'm aware of with respect to the landscaping is the failure to put in all of the plantings that were required by the site plan approval.
And it, it...
And that was your decision, your site plan decision.
The decision was also not to remove...
And that's what we're remedying now.
No. Can I have the decision from 2022? We were reading it this afternoon.
Don't know if I brought it with me.
A planning board decision?
But that is a standard condition of approval, and we did review it this afternoon, is that existing landscaping must be preserved in addition to the additional plantings that are shown on the landscaping plan.
And that I...
And if something is to die, it needs to be replaced, you know, in kind.
Does my board remember talking about those trees? They're, they're the only buffer that they've got on that, and now they're all gone. In the back... the back of the building.
What decision?
There was, there, I have pictures. I have pictures from my phone from 2023 that I asked, that I took to Eilich, Eilich, and Eilich's, and we, we have them. She said I could bring them up. I took them from my camera from 2023. I took pictures of this because this is my bitch, okay? This is my complaint. You take down 30-foot trees. I understand he's got a great business there, Mr. Hearn, but our decision said current landscaping was not to be rem, I'm not talking about the, the trees, the junipers, all along the back, look out the back window. Can we pull up those pictures that we had, Sarah, or no? And they're gone.
Are you talking about a planning board decision from 20, when was that?
2023.
2023?
Yes, when we did all this landscaping, when we, when we approved the, the parking.
I don't, I don't recall any trees as part of this process. When I showed up, that they had taken, any of these mature trees they'd taken down.
Well, we, we read it today, and Eilich gave it to me, and I have.
May I take a look at it?
I, now I can't find it because I'm buried in papers. But I can, I'll give you my phone if you want. We, and, and we've discussed it ad nauseam, that the new landscaping for the parking lot was around the parking lot and behind the parking lot. We've discussed those creeping junipers and all that. And the major thing, I remember this specifically, was those are old cypress trees that ran along, what's the road? Ridge?
Ridge.
Ridge. There's one house right behind it, and there was a row of cypress. Now, I've got some pictures from, I thought, I'm not, we've got some pictures from 10, 2012, but the ones that are on my phone are from 2022. And I looked, pulled them off my camera, and we were going to be able to put them on the screen. The only way I'm going to be able to show them to you because I'm not techn, I'm technologically challenged is on my phone.
We, we were before the zoning board and got, uh, at, on December 5th of 2022. We were before your board, I believe, in February of 2023. We gave both boards what we proposed for landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we've, we're trying to finish up. We're trying to fix.
That's not, that's not the question I've got. I, I get that you're trying to finish up the, the three-inch caliper trees in front of the parking lot and, and the junip, the kind of junipers. We said existing landscaping, which was all those trees that were buffering the neighbor, and they're gone.
I'm looking at the zoning board, the special permit decision, which doesn't reference that. You're, you're referring to your decision of?
Yes.
2023?
Yes.
The site plan approval decision from planning board had a condition stating that.
Let me get, see if I have that close at hand.
Yeah. It's probably.
Eddie, I do have your photos.
Huh?
I have the photos that you had submitted. I don't know if that's what you're looking for now, but.
Um, yes. So, those are just, the, those are Fridays, I think.
This is what I have.
Okay. I can't see that far. Um, yeah, those are Friday because those are all your dead, so down a little more or up a little, uh, maybe the beginning. Keep going. Keep going.
That's all I have.
That's all you got?
All right, I have February 17.
These are the ones that I took on Friday. And.
Oh, God. I'm so tired of my children.
Hold on, let me. Look, would you read that again, Sarah? The, the decision from?
I don't have the decision.
I have the decision here. With respect to landscaping and screening, the board found, the board, a couple of things. The board found the proposed project is compliant with all provisions of the zoning bylaw. Under landscaping and screening, the proposed landscaping and screening are sufficient to mitigate any negative impacts of redevelopment on the site. That's what you found. Our proposed landscaping and screening are sufficient to mitigate any negative impacts of the redevelopment. That's what your decision says. I'm still reading. All landscaping, both existing and proposed, shall be maintained.
Okay, there you go. Stop right there, please.
All right. What, what do you mean by landscaping?
Both existing.
Landscaping. Tree, trees or talk about the plants and shrubs you want us to?
No, 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 I'm talking about the trees. I understand that this is a twofold thing, that we were put, we, we made the decision on giving him more parking and that we were going to have landscaping behind it, a little green and some trees right on Napontet Street. And existing was the thing that I was most concerned with for the neighborhood. I'm thrilled that his business is doing good. It's, again, he's a victim of his own success. I understand that. But that was a concern that I, I remember succinctly beating it to death, that those are existing trees. And I don't know if anybody's heard me, but taking down an old tree and giving me a three-inch caliper tree is not what I think is appropriate. And existing was the thing that we were concerned with. Because he wasn't supposed to be touching anything over here, Mr. Hearn. He was doing a parking lot with green around the back, green in the front with the three trees, and then the other, what is that other road on the right, Sarah?
Ridge.
No, ridge is over here.
Is, is across on the other side.
Okay. So, he was putting up the fence. That was one part of the project. The other part of the project was, and I, I went down there and I, remember I took all the pictures, the, the tires that were out? I believe I brought that to your attention, the tires that were out right on the sidewalk, and that all got cleaned up right away. But the tree, the existing trees were the ones that we were all concerned with, the neighbors, the board, and we put into, we put that into the decision, the existing trees. And now they're gone. And the neighbors have no buffer. There is no neighbor behind them where they put the parking spot.
The neighbors on Ridge Road who have been complaining, those trees, I think, are the same as were there on Ridge Road.
Just on the corner.
Well, that's where their house is off, I mean, on the corner of Napontet or the back corner of the property?
The back corner, well.
I, I thought you were talking, are you talking about the trees along the back of this, of the?
I'm talking about the trees along the back and the trees, they should take, take the turn, and there's a fence, and we left three or four of them, but they ran further down the fence. There is a, a gap that was from, I don't know, 2023.
You're talking about this house?
We have this discussion today. I just, I haven't taken down trees, I haven't taken out any trees as part of this, you know, this, that we got a long time ago, but.
I think there were trees taken down earlier. Along that, but not in connection with your decision in 2023. You're not substituting, I don't believe substituting your decision in 2023.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about these right here. These, and all of these are gone.
All right, so these, these.
What year is that?
This is, this is. Just to be clear, may I show you what?
Yep.
I want to make sure we understand what you're asking about.
Okay.
Are you asking about, so here's Napontet Street, here's Ridge Road.
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking about trees here or here? The ones here are still there.
No, half of them are still there. Half of them are still there. He's pulling up Google Map.
I mean, we looked at a whole bunch of them today, uh, at our department head meeting, and, um, I think the ones along the East Cross property, those are still there.
Half of them are still there.
Some of the pictures look pretty bad.
Well, half of them are still there. The, on the corner, they put the fence, they've got three or four of them, but they ran further. But look at Google Map and look at the pictures that I had. And that's, that's my argument. I'm getting, I'm getting, uh, so, any other questions from the board? I'm, and I'll open it up to the audience in a minute. The other, you, you also.
I don't, I'm going to try to take a look at the Google Earth that we got earlier here, right here.
Do we have the file from the last, the 2023 proceedings?
We did, and I, I left.
You don't have?
That stays in the office.
Mm-hmm.
It stays in the office.
Okay, I mean, it's tough to, it's a tough answer without seeing what the plan showed at that time.
Yes. Because East Cross is the one where all the trees were. The, the other, again, I was down there Friday for an hour and 10 minutes, and the argument that, that I'm getting, that I'm concerned with is there was 39 cars in that lot, 26 over here, and then a combination of 10, 12 cars. They weren't just waiting, those, those two spots in front of the pumps, there's three. I know you've painted them all black. There was two spot cars there the entire time I was there because somebody pulled out. He's, again, a victim of his own success. It's a great little business.
It is.
But then the next car pulled in, and they're right on the sidewalk.
And that's what we're asking for, to put a curb up to keep them from going on the sidewalk. We discussed that with the fire department.
Okay.
The head of the GPW and the head of the building department.
I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to the public, but.
I'm, I'm all right.
You, you all right?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Powers is pulling up Google Map?
We're not.
Okay. Have any more questions? Brian?
I just want to demuddy the waters here. Mr. Hearn, in the most basic terms possible, what is the relief you're seeking here? To modify the handicap parking spots?
To allow the 90-degree shift of the handicapped and short-term spots.
Yep, and then to put a curb on the sidewalk is this part?
Subject to, but we would ask that that be a condition that would be subject to review and approval of your.
And there's no relief being sought whatsoever.
And to remove, and to remove.
Yep.
Any reference to the building from the prior decision.
And the next thing is that there will be no modification or looking back towards the landscaping requirements in the 2023 approval?
No, we're going to have that completed hopefully very soon.
Formed a letter with what was decided back then.
We're, we're going to have, yeah. The landscape architect is going to sign off that we're in compliance with that. There was one discussion today about substituting one thing for another that the planting department, I think, was okay with and, and the others, the department heads didn't care about. But we're going to come back with a plan that is, shows the plantings as being in compliance with the, with the decision.
Yeah.
He planted some stuff, couldn't get other stuff. We're now, the next planting season, he's trying to get it all in.
I'm just trying to harness this. So, there's no, no modification whatsoever being sought from the, the previously approved landscaping component of, of that approval? That, that was awkward. There's no changes whatsoever.
From what we discussed in the February 23, here's the landscaping we're going to put in, that we're not proposing any modification of that.
Fair enough. Okay.
The chair has raised another question, but we don't quite agree on that yet.
And, and all these questions about the trees removal is essentially, if anything, a question of enforcement, right?
To be said that there were existing trees shown on the proposed landscaping plan or existing trees that were shown on the approved site plan that were not given approval to be removed, if those were removed, that would, I assume, be an issue in the enforcement mechanism.
Okay.
That would come up with the landscape architect providing that certification. If trees that were shown as being existing and preserved and have not been, then I assume, yes, that would be a conversation we have in the process of.
Yeah. Nobody has cited us. We've been cited by the building commissioner for the three parking spots and for the, uh, lack of a CO on the building that wasn't within their jurisdiction anyway, your jurisdiction, and, um, to make sure that landscaping complies with the landscape plan that we filed.
Okay.
And that you approved. The thing that came up today about what, and, and, you know, can't have parking that leaks over onto that wide sidewalk. We can't, we understand that. So, we explored with the department heads, couldn't resolve it on the spot, but explored the idea of putting some physical thing so that people don't drive out onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, we got rid of the lines. That, in some respects, makes it a little more dangerous because people now think it's wide open, um, but we have some ideas. We toss them around with the department heads. We're going to try to refine them, and I, and our ask on that is that if you authorize, if you tell us, we can use that area on our property if we put a curb or some barrier in there that is satisfactory to the department heads we're talking to, um, that were at the meeting, then we'd ask that that be authorized by them since they're the ones who are dealing with the mechanics of it. That's, that's what comes down. So, it's sort of four things, but.
I just wanted to clarify for all.
And I understand it, it feels muddy, but as I said, if we left out the building and the, and the handicap spots, the, they're not asking for relief from landscaping, but the, the word existing is what I'm stuck on here. And also, we, we have, have been issued a certificate of occupancy? Yes, we're, are we actually?
We don't do that.
We have to get.
I know we don't do that.
These things squared away.
In order to get that.
So that the building commissioner can look at it.
Look at the final plans and say, yeah, you did this, this, and that that you're required to do under the site plan approval.
And landscaping is part of that. Landscaping is part of that, being in compliance with the landscaping.
Landscaping is part of it, and I think it'll be, it's, in some respects, it may be a question of what was there then or what the definition of landscaping is, and, and so we've got to look at that, too.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm going to open it up to, oh, Ernie, you have another question?
Madam Chairman, if, just to, to Brian's point of unmuddying the muddy waters here, is it, uh, can we do, take each, um, do a vote on each one, on each modification, and that may narrow it down to our discussion?
Okay, like the landscaping?
Well, yeah, yeah.
And removing?
So, I'll make them, first, I'm going to make the motion that we, if.
Can I open?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, they don't, it's not a public hearing.
Okay. We can do four separate.
Yeah, and then close.
I would pick like a, like an informal poll, like a small poll, yeah.
All right.
But when you're approving the plan, you're.
All right, so I'm going to, I, and not make the motion, but.
Hold on, before you make the motion. Can I, nobody from the audience can?
Is this?
At your discretion, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, and I'm going to ask if anybody, and I'm going to give you, and there's, is there somebody on line also?
Yeah.
Can I, can I set a time because?
Sure.
Okay. Is five minutes enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Probably take me five minutes.
I was going to say that.
We won't count, we won't start the clock.
Thank you. First, could I please introduce myself? I'm Helen Abdele Donahue. I live at 1027 Washington Street in South Mulberry.
Okay.
And it's a pleasure to see everybody here tonight. I have some important questions. How many mechanics do you have on the site that can be your client?
I'm sure how they throw them into what's your discussion.
Oh, and why can we get an understanding?
Um, I think you have to ask me, Mrs. Donahue.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And I don't, and I, I'm not just parroting what he said, but is that pertinent to?
Definitely is.
Okay. Um, I think we have to get you that answer because I don't know if any of these.
The owner should know.
Is the owner here?
Well.
We have three days.
Okay, we currently have three days. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a guess and say, so we don't use up your five minutes of time.
Okay, and could I please see the current plan that's submitted? I didn't get to see that.
This one or the one where?
I'll talk. What I found in the town record with these plans, as Mr. Mason noted, it's, Attorney Hearn mentioned February, but the plans of record and the town record that I got today were April 2nd, 2025.
That's the one we're looking at.
So that's.
That's the one we're looking at.
So is that the one, it shows the building though? The one that I have shows the building. I have it right here, just copy of it if the board would like it.
No, we have that one, April 20th.
Does it show, it shows the proposed building? All right, then I also have, oh, thank you so much. That's the same plan that I have.
Yep.
That's the one that's in the town file.
That's one that we discussed.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's important. Then I have a letter dated April 4th, 2025, respectfully submitted by Gus and William Realty to the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeal in connection with the application for modification of a special permit granted in December of 2022 relative to an expansion of a parking area for the Norwood Gulf business at 707 Noponton Street. The applicant requests a waiver of the requirement of providing building plans as a part of the special permit modification application due to the fact that the modifications requested involve exterior features of the premises and not of concern to the building. My question is, would it be possible that your board would continue this hearing until after? There's another Board of Appeal hearing coming up on May 6th. Is that the case?
That's right.
There is a Board of Appeal hearing coming up on May 6th. And before I became a member of the Board of Selectmen, I did mostly all my law practice with zoning. And in the old days, what you had to do, you had to go to the Board of Appeal first and get everything squared away with the Board of Appeal. Then you went to the planning board for the, for the site plan. That's, that's how we did it then. And I think that in order to protect the town, that we should find out exactly what's gonna happen at the Board of Appeal. And then you'll have a much clearer understanding of what you need to do here. And I'd be very cautious about taking a voting here to take a building off of a plan so that you won't have site plan review if you don't know what's gonna happen on the next step. It's, you have to be, you have to go according to the procedure.
I, may I, I'll stick another 30 seconds onto your five. I understand what you're saying, but this wasn't in front of us on our decision.
I'm sorry?
The, the building that he wants us to take off, which I don't know that the board's gonna agree or not to agree on that.
What you're talking about, 707.
Yes.
Noponton Street in Norwood.
Yes.
You're talking about the use, the entire use of a neighborhood lot. Now, up and around a long time, up and around so long that I remember when Carl Johnson wanted to put in his dealership on the Cloverleaf down on the highway. And every single thing that Carl Johnson said that he would do, he did. He complied with everything. He never, and subsequent owners of the property have expanded it. But Carl Johnson did what he was supposed to do exactly. And that entire neighborhood was protected.
Are we talking about 707? Is Carl's 707?
No, I'm talking about the neighborhood.
Okay.
You have been, your position and the planning board's position in the town is to protect neighborhoods. What we have is, according to the plan that you're referring to tonight, we have three days, no one will answer how many mechanics we have. No one was kind enough to say, we have one mechanic, we have two mechanics. What are all those cars doing there all day long, like you observed yourself? Why were all those trees cut down? That, what we're doing here is we're having a big, big infringement on a neighborhood. And I don't want it to keep happening in Norwood because Norwood is a town, and we have to maintain it as a town. Mr. Petrikowski, in the beginning, you were protecting your neighborhood when you started talking here tonight. That's your neighborhood, and your job to protect it. And it's all of our jobs as publicly elected.
I agree, Helen, it's all of our jobs. The owner has rights.
But the right isn't valid because he was, that Board of Appeal decision was made, the last one that they're talking about was made in 2022.
Yeah.
Now, in 2018, the town of Norwood did away with use variances. No more use variances after 2018. What is a use variance? Mr. Sheehan will know. You were probably on the Board of, uh, Planning Board then, Mr. Sheehan. Could, do you wanna tell them, take away my five? Let me, okay. So a use variance, in case you don't know, means that if there is a type of zoning in a neighborhood, no matter what, no Board of Appeal, no Planning Board can change it to a use that's more infringing on the neighborhood.
Well, but, but, I, okay.
So the deed was done in 28, 2022, or even prior to that, when the first Board of Decision was. Carl Johnson started it off right, and he did it right. That, you referred to a decision in 20, we should all go back to the year that you said, the 55 decision.
65, 1965.
Whatever, that's the one that we should all go back to. That's where you should be getting your information. Not from all, in the file, there is a letter from their architect, RBLA Design, dated to the town planner. Thank you for all the information on how to use the computer. And it says, and on the front, it says to Norwood Gulf, Renoard Gulf.
What's the date?
The date is April 7th, 2025. It was on the computer.
Okay.
And it says, several shrubs are planted too close to the parking lot in conflict with the parked cars. We recommend relocating these toward the fence and replacing the three-foot bed along the back of the curb with ground cover plantings spaced to create a native quote-unquote lawn.
Okay.
Even their architect, even their landscape architect is kidding around.
Can you give me your, because now we're running out of your five minutes?
Okay.
Can you give me your bottom line?
My bottom line is, please protect the town of Norwood by continuing this hearing until after the decision is final so that you'll know what you're dealing with. And, and then maybe you'll even wanna put input into the decision. And any material that I found, I'd be glad to share.
Okay, thank you.
That's my request.
Okay.
And thank you for letting me talk.
And since I let Mr. Donahue talk.
It's Mr. Palmetier.
Okay, I gave Mrs. Donahue five minutes. Mr. Palmetier, I'll give you five minutes also. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm actually surprised because I was under the impression this was not a public hearing and that I wouldn't have to speak. But as I'm hearing the discussion, I may be in a unique position to clarify a few things, specifically with the trees.
Remember, you've got five minutes.
Yeah, okay. I think you can probably go ahead and vote on where the handicap spots are if you think those are good.
Okay, hold on one second. You didn't identify yourself and give your address, please.
I'm sorry, Brian Palmetier, 18 Ridge Road, a butter right across the street from.
Okay, got it.
On Ridge Road. And when the trees started coming down, I was directly affected. So, so here is, is where, I guess, you're, you're, right now, you're trying to key on the word existing. And that may get you into trouble, or it may, it may be, you know, how do you define it? Because I can tell you the history of the trees. Back in 2012, I believe it was, is when the town approved the third bay. From 1965 all the way up to 2012, that was a two-bay building. The Selectmen, in their wisdom and the ZBA, in its wisdom, way back when, when it set the original conditions and gave the license, they said, we wanna keep it small. It has to be compatible with the neighborhood. It has to be brick. They even specified the brick, pipe, and shade, and what manufacturer from Pennsylvania did it come from. So they were very specific to say, this has to be compatible with the neighborhood, and we have to be careful about how this fits into the neighborhood. Now, the problem, I think, where, what you guys are in a dilemma is because somewhere along the way, probably 2023, you said, we're not gonna hold them accountable for having taken down these old growth trees that were planted as a condition of the special permit granted back in 1965. We're not gonna find them. We're just gonna say, hey, you got a new landscape plan with these little tiny four-inch, four-foot trees. We're gonna let you plant these, and we're gonna say, oh, good, now you're, now you're good. And that did not replace the four-story tall buffer that used to keep the sounds and the noise, why we had a quiet tree-lined neighborhood. So when I see the little trees, my wife is four foot seven, and she towers over those little trees that they're trying to plant there. And I've got some cool pictures, which I would be happy to submit to the board. But, you know, I'm actually bringing them with me to this ZBA meeting next week. The, it's inadequate, it's inadequate. Now, here's, here's the dilemma. The first set of trees came down between the Lot 41 and 42 border, that's right behind the building, when they built the third bay. That was, that was 2013, I think, they just appeared. There was still a whole line of trees at the back of the property. There was still a whole line of trees that ran all along 15 Ridge Road and right down, you know, the person at 15 Ridge Road. It was in August of 2017. Now, this is before, when the guy, when the guy that's there in the, in the, in the, in the meeting there said, those trees were already gone by the time we did our 2023 thing, he's right.
Okay.
So if he wants to, if he wants to make the term existing, I mean, how close am I to the end of those five minutes? If he wants to make.
You've got two left.
Yeah, if he wants to make the term existing, meaning what was there when you did the plan in 2023, then those trees were already gone. If you wanna make the term existing, meaning the ones that exist still in the plans, still in the laws, still in special permit requirements, that those, those trees have to stay exist because they're still permitted, then that whole row of old trees that was taken down there needs to be replaced in some form. Perhaps.
Okay.
Perhaps they could, they could probably get away with two-story trees. You could probably get the stand of Arbor Vita or some sort of a, you know, blue spruce that grows tight that will fill in, that will buffer the neighborhood once again from it. But, you know, if you look at Noponton Street and you look back, you see 15 Ridge Road, and you see the whole side of their house. And when that parking lot is lit up at night, like Route 1, you know, Providence Highway auto dealership, it, it, there are several of my neighbors that are doing things like buying shades. And they don't open their windows on summer nights anymore for the breeze because they wouldn't be able to sleep with the lights. So those trees.
I gotta cut you off.
So that's the existing thing.
Your clock's at 30 seconds.
Yeah, so that, so I have to say, or I have to admit, it was before this decision when you guys said the landscaping met the codes or met the plans, and then it was enough. But if that's what you consider existing, then, that's right, the trees didn't exist then. If you wanna think about it as a matter of law, as a matter of permit, as a matter of the safeguards and conditions that were stipulated in 1965 and were adhered to all the way up until the burn owner bought it from Cumberland Farms, then the existing trees are the ones that were four stories tall, which had come back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board?
May I respond?
Five minutes.
What we've been listening to?
Yep.
Thank you.
With respect to Mrs. Donahue's comments, we haven't had use variances in Norwood for many years. They fell into disfavor many years ago as far as zoning went, and our zoning bylaw was updated over the years. This business operates under special permits. It is a non-conforming use that was allowed many, many years ago. And anytime we are dealing with any change in that, we have to go to the zoning board for a, a special permit type of relief that deals with, and a consideration on their part, whether the proposed condition will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing condition. That's the language in the bylaw. Nothing in the bylaw about use variances. I agree with Mrs. Donahue on that, but it hasn't been for a long time. This property, and, and the idea of kicking this over until the zoning board might make a decision. The zoning board is being asked to make a decision about, in addition to the existing buildings. That's what we're going to them for. And also to have them agree to modify, from their point of view, too, the layout of those parking spots. You have the landscaping part of this, although they also wanted landscaping. We had landscaping plans that included white pines. In 2023, the big trees along 15 Ridge Road were not there. And Tim has just sent the pictures to Sarah. Those were not there in 2023. They had not been there for a while. We filed a landscape plan that shows Japanese maple, eastern white pine being installed along the back of the property adjacent to 15 Ridge Road, along with all these other trees that were to be put in. That's what was approved. Existing means what's there now. We weren't talking past tense, we were talking about existing. We left the existing stuff along Ridge Road, inside, outside of the fence, I think it was. And we've added significant amounts within the site and are in the process of completing that. So, you know, your board is not bound by every condition of prior boards. But your board hasn't been that involved with this property anyway, until we get into site plan review. In 2023, I think, was when we had site plan review with this board, maybe earlier than that, I can't remember. But what triggered it in 2023 was we were dealing with a parking, changes to a parking facility or parking lot of a number that triggered site plan review. The building had nothing to do with it. That's within the jurisdiction of the, of the zoning board only. We would like to get these conditions. The parking condition, the three spaces that we shifted because it made sense to shift them, and Mark Schubert said, go, you know, it makes sense. Technically, we didn't get it approved by this board or by the department, should have. Shame on us for not doing that. But frankly, when the local building inspector, who was the longtime building commissioner, says that makes sense to do that, why would you argue? So we're, we're asking you to allow for the modification to clarify that technical violation. We're asking for the modification to remove or to make clear that this decision does not involve the waiting room addition that was built, not in your jurisdiction. We are telling you that the, the required plantings are being put in and will be completed shortly. Will be certified by our landscape architect. And we are telling you that we are not going to have cars parked on the public way on that wide sidewalk. It's probably double the size of a normally required sidewalk, but we're not gonna go over the line. And we're going to hopefully work out with Public Works and the Fire Department in particular how best to do that with some sort of a barrier. But not a barrier that's gonna interfere with people being there or create potential traffic problems in the case of emergency. So that's where a small curb makes sense, and they seem to be. They were okay with that, but we couldn't discuss specifics.
Okay.
I'd like that to be a condition. What Mr. Palmetier is talking about that happened maybe in the distant past, your board, to the extent it's within your jurisdiction, can modify what a prior board did. And the zoning board can modify what a prior zoning board did. Nobody, there wouldn't be a point to having, if they were bound by conditions that were put in effect many years ago, that people may or may not have been aware of, they wouldn't have any authority if they couldn't modify those to meet current standards and current needs. They did that. You did it knowingly when you approved all this landscaping two years ago. And, and that's what I'm trying to say to you. And if you look at that plan, it involves all kinds of trees along that back. Existing plantings, the trees weren't there. What do you have?
I found my June 5th, 2023 pictures.
May I see?
Yep. So these are the ones that I sent. So there's, oh, you just, sorry.
I don't wanna see a vacation.
You don't wanna see my, careful.
Don't wanna unsee that.
Hold on, yeah, can't unsee it. I'm so technologically challenged. Okay, so it was June. Okay, here we go, April, May. Okay. Slide, slide this.
Okay, that's on Noponton Street. Is there more?
Keep going, yep, yep. There's nothing on there you can't see, yep.
Okay. Yep, I can see. We know this. Yeah, we're working on this. Yep, that's fine. All right, keep going, that's fine. Yep. You got a call, we're not gonna answer.
Don't answer it.
Um, we know, we know what the problem is here with respect to cars. Is there more?
Now, this is, yep, keep going.
Okay.
You're gonna see the trees.
Those trees are outside of the fence?
No, keep going. The problem is, when I was taking those pictures, and then I was down on Friday, I do carry my book around with me when I'm out stocking properties. Yeah.
No, is that one you want me to look at?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, hold on. I want you to see the corner.
That's been resolved long ago.
No, no, no. I put these, okay, that's.
Do you wanna?
Here's, here's one.
The Google Earth pictures?
Yeah, but I've got. There we go. That one's gone. And I don't. And I don't have the Wayback because at the time I couldn't get around the tires.
That's on Cross Street?
Cross Street, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, I think that's still there. I didn't do any, you work over there. We haven't worked over there yet. You replaced the fence or the red fence?
Okay, all right.
The fence has moved, there's more fence there than, so maybe that tree, which was at an opening, is no longer at an opening.
All right. I'm going to, I, you've given up your five minutes, I've pushed my board far enough, I'm 15 minutes out. We're going to, have you done?
I guess, I just wanted to respond to statements that were made that I think were inaccurate, but--
Yes, sir.
Attorney Hearn, I, so when we did this decision, the site plan approval for that parking lot was February of '23. Right? And if I heard you correctly, all those big 40-foot trees that Mr. Palmetier is talking about were taken down previous to that? So, so when we did the site plan approval, those 40-foot trees did not exist?
Exactly.
That's your, that's, so they didn't, they were not taken down to accommodate the fence in the parking lot. They were down previous to that.
Right. Well, well, previous.
There was no prohibition of taking them down.
Right.
When we came before you, we, we gave you a whole plan of what we proposed to do.
I think, I don't know, I think that, I don't know if that clears things up, Deb, for us.
I don't have pictures in the Wayback, but I remember walking it around, talking to the neighbors in 2023. That was my concern, but I can't prove it because I don't have a picture of the Wayback fence.
They're saying that those trees were taken down--
All the other way you're just going to see--
The big, when you, when we approved this plan--
Yep.
You had a vacant lot there, correct? And those trees were not there.
Correct.
So they were taken down--
Previously.
Previously by, a property owner has the right to take the trees down. Unfortunately, they took down the buffer for the neighborhood, correct? We can both assume that, agree with that. So they, when we approved this plan, those trees were not taken down to accommodate this plan.
Okay, so it starts there.
Okay, thank you.
And then we, we're going to put in dozens of shrubs, trees, and other plants. I don't even know what the total number is, but a lot of them. And there's more to come in.
Okay, all right. I belabored it enough. So what is the pleasure of the board? You want to take this in two, you want to take this in two questions?
Well, I think that Sarah suggested maybe we, instead of doing Mike, my initial thought was individual votes on the, on the modification motions.
I think you should take a straw poll on each--
But take a straw poll on each, so I would, if you don't mind--
I don't mind at all.
Unless you want to do this.
No, I would love you to do it.
On the issue of the relocation of the handicap spots, we're basically flipping them, we're not changing the amount, the number, just flipping the direction to make it a more adequate direction.
And one short term slot.
And one short.
Three slots in total.
Three slots in total, basically churning them to make it an easier access.
Yep.
Is there anyone that's not in favor of that?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Number two, is there anyone not in favor of having them work with the Department of Public Works and put a, some type of a line of demarcation between, on the property line where cars could go in to wait for stickers versus the public way?
A physical barrier.
Physical barrier.
And fire department.
And fire department. Whoever, whoever, whatever town departments need to wait. Is there an issue there?
No.
Kind of. Okay. My issue is, and trust me, I would like to go home too, okay? My issue is that it's going to be ugly. Don't frown.
No, no, let me--
It's going to be fried. It is, unless we get our bite of the apple now, we're not going to get it. If we just put up those, those stays, what do they call them? Curb stops. And we ram them into the ground with a six-inch stake, you know, people are going to run over them. It's, we're not going to, so do I have a, do I have any, can I do anything to make it a little more palatable?
The fire department was content with that suggestion, and that was a suggestion that was raised by Alex and I because we were concerned about pedestrian safety, to the extent that historically there's been either striped or not parking by the occupant of this property--
I get it completely.
On the public right of way. How do we preserve a safe space for pedestrians to use the public right of way, the sidewalk, without being concerned that there's some vehicular overlap onto that sidewalk?
And if we had something--
The fire department said that, given the low rates of speed in that area, just because of the circulation patterns there, that the curb stop would be sufficient to provide safety for pedestrians, which was the rationale for having that as a solution. That's not a conversation about aesthetic quality or green space, which it sounds like maybe that's your concern, but to the extent that that conversation happened, it was really about safety for pedestrians, and the fire department and DPW both were content with that solution.
God, God, God that they're content with that solution. I am not, but what's the flavor of the board?
Do you have a solution?
Sure. Put a, a landscape circle there and put some green in it and give us the sidewalk back. And you're only going to have enough room to, for--
You wouldn't have enough room for the cars.
Not--
I mean, if you, if you look at it--
All right, give us a berm and, 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 you know, delineate it. It's, it's road, curb, and the gas, you know, blacktop all the way up to the pumps. So you're going to put two of those stops there.
We would put several of those curb stops there. We discussed with the fire department and, and everybody in the room--
We are not the fire department.
I know that, but the fire department is concerned about safety. And that's the concern we've heard expressed, that if somebody is going to drift out into that pedestrian sidewalk, which is twice as wide, the town sidewalk is twice as wide as it needs to be--
There's no sidewalk, it's a bunch of blacktop.
That's the sidewalk they're talking about that we're parking on. It's eight feet deep when normally sidewalks are four feet.
There's no sidewalk, Mr. Hearn. There's sidewalk, blacktop, and, and gas pumps.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk, it's just a mess of blacktop.
No, there's, there is--
Because we've never held anybody's feet to the fire that said, this is an eyesore. It's a great business, they're great people, but that has just been getting less and less attention, and now it's just a bunch of blacktop that we're going to put some stops in and--
But if, if the town wants to put a concrete sidewalk in there, it can, if you think that's more attractive. But right now, we have the gas dispensers, we call them pumps, but they're technically--
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it.
The dispensers.
We don't need to belabor it. I'm not going to get anywhere with it, I get it.
No, my, the point is, the fire department wants something so somebody doesn't hit a pedestrian by swinging to it.
I know what the fire department, all of a sudden they want something? It's been like that for four years. And now they want to make sure nobody gets hit? Okay, I know what the fire department wants. I get it, I get it.
If you want us to do something nicer, we'd have to do it within the public way, and we'd have to clear it with DPW and all that. If you wanted us to put some pretty green stuff there, a flower box or something like that as part of the barrier, but within our property, we, if we give up more than the space of those, you know, some of those curb stop things that are held in place with rebars, if we give that up, we actually create a safety issue because if somebody had to go around somebody who's at the gas pumps, they can't do it if you make too much, if you put--
Yes, they can, they just can't park a car there and get gas there, but, okay.
No, but if you're talking about putting a pretty green stuff in there, we'll, we'll lose the area that allows a car to pass there.
Okay.
Okay, it's wide enough for a car now, and we'll put, if we put in a curb stop, we will keep people off of the public way. That's what we're saying.
Okay.
They were okay with it.
Number three. Landscape--
I knew I should have gone like--
The landscape plan will be brought up to the, to the original decision. A landscape, a signed off landscape plan will be, and will be handed into the planning office. Yeah, you said that--
Yeah, I don't think any action's really needed. We're just telling you that we're not asking for modification, we'll be--
You're not asking for modification, but--
Right. And the certification is already a condition of the approval.
Right.
No, no real actions needed anymore.
Ms. Ernie?
So we've--
What I'd like to do is put a, a deadline on it, like three more months, so we don't get that we're missing the planting season.
That's fine, it's going anyhow, we can do that. It's exactly legal.
I'd also, okay, so that's number three.
And then the final one would be in some form, and again, this is just straw poll, referencing or the building on the, on the site plan approval, the addition, the first addition, the one that was built, was not intended to be part of the site plan approval, and we either make a note as such and add it to the decision or remove it from the decision. And that's the little room, and again, that was a zoning board of appeals. Deal, not ours. Our site plan approval was lighting, parking lot, landscaping. And just to Mrs. Donahue's point, I don't think what Attorney Hearn's saying, what is going before the zoning board of appeals would have any effect, I don't see on what we're talking about tonight. Unless Sarah, you think that there's a reason that we shouldn't wait for a ZBA? I don't, I don't see it.
If the ZBA approves the addition, it does not need to return to planning board for site plan approval because the addition is small enough that it doesn't trigger site plan--
Nor did this one.
Correct.
Right.
Which is why it's not on the plan before you. That also means that the site plan of record doesn't show the addition that's been approved, which isn't, in my opinion, super clean, but that is the technically correct matter of process, yes. It would not be on the site plan of record because it did not need to go before planning board for site plan approval.
So that would be the eliminated--
And I only note that because of all of the confusion that this unique instance has generated bouncing back and forth between two boards--
And one side says--
Which is at no fault of anybody's--
Right.
It's just, it's a unique circumstance where you've got two different boards controlling two different parts of development on the same lot. So I'm only making that note just to explain some of the clarity issues I think that have been generated--
So does anyone have a niche problem with that approval?
Which, what, be specific.
Either, I'm going to let Sarah determine, and she can get together with Attorney Hearn on what the proper way would be, with either to put a note or a--
No, I think we have to vote on it.
The lawyers want to do it.
We have to vote on it.
Yes, we have to vote on it.
We can work on the actual language, and one or two sentences might take care of it--
Right.
To, to recognize what you're deciding.
Right.
So we would issue a site plan modification, which would be a separate standalone document referencing the original site plan approval, and we would make in the decision that references A, B, and C would be struck from the record. That's typically how we, how we do it.
As well as, as well as if you approve the parking spots--
Well, right, but specific to the city.
And also if you, and also the language about working with the DPW and the fire department to have an approved physical barrier that they're satisfied with.
Right, but he was just discussing the mechanics of how we--
Yeah, we got to vote on it, but you guys, you guys could figure out the mechanics.
One or two page site plan modification decision.
Point of order, point of order.
Um, one minute.
Doesn't, doesn't the terms of the vote have to be discussed in a public meeting? The exact where you want to vote?
Right, we haven't made a motion yet.
Yeah, we're, we're, right.
We're just, in a discussion--
We're doing, we're discussing, and I'm going to, are you done?
I am done, now you will, if you feel--
Can I go back to your, just, I'm taking notes as we go. The landscape certification, you mentioned three months? Is that a timeline that the board--
That's fine, that gives you, that's the planting season and--
Three months from the date of the vote this evening?
That works. He's working on it. It might be done in three days, but we're okay with it.
Three months from today.
But you know about how these planners get the plan turned down?
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to be clear.
Ernie, is there anything else to add?
Uh, that, and so you're ready--
I'm liking your straw poll, so I have a couple of questions. I'd like to put in something that we restrict within reason, the hours of, of dropping So it's not happening at 3:00 in the morning or--
Does it now?
That's one of the, one of the complaints with one of the neighbors. Again, I know, you know, the beep, beep, beeping and delivering gas happens at weird hours now, we don't have, and, and the opening of the gas station. Now, I understand, I think within reason with, we've got the bays, we've got the noise, we're in a residential neighborhood, let's try to do something that buffers these people from each other. Your client has a right to do what is within our little book. The guys on the other, you know, the land, the neighbors have a right also.
I agree.
So let's try to do something that can keep them from--
Chair, that might be a ZBA issue.
Yeah.
Restricting hours?
Yes.
That would be appropriate as a condition for the special--
That would be, the zoning board of appeals and not our preview, purview.
Point of investigation.
This is for site plan approval.
Right, this is site plan approval.
We've, I'm not prepared to speak to that because that's, we have, we've never, I'm not aware of any complaints on that. And we've heard from the building inspector on several complaints.
Building inspector doesn't live there.
But anybody who has a concern about violation of the zoning bylaw or a site plan decision is supposed to complain to the building commissioner, who is the zoning enforcement officer. So we've been made aware of certain objections. This is the first time I've heard an objection to hours of operation or delivery times, and that really falls within the, whether the zoning board makes a decision on the effect of a proposed change to the non-conforming use, whether it is substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. They can take that up, and, and we'll be prepared with the hours that we have.
Who can take that up? ZBA?
ZBA, we're going to them next week.
I believe that's a ZBA decision.
Can I notify a point of--
That town of Norwood has a currently existing bylaw that says deliveries aren't supposed to be made in between certain hours. I'm not sure in the evening if it's 10, but they're not supposed to be made until 11:00 in the morning. So if anyone has a complaint, they should do what Mr. Hearn said, report it immediately to the building department.
All right, all right.
I don't know that 11:00 in the morning, but we intend to comply with the requirements--
Okay, all right, all right, listen, I'm grasping at straws here.
Somebody online.
Oh.
Was there a comment online?
Okay, Mr. Palmetier, one minute.
Palmetier.
Palmetier, sorry.
Okay.
One minute.
I'm just learning, I'm learning right now something I didn't know that I didn't know. You're going to see a letter to the editor this week that, that starts with a sentence something like, "I was waking at 2:30 in the morning, Friday into Saturday, Saturday morning, this week, by the beep, beep, beep of a backup truck." So I will be, if I, if I need to report that, I have videotape of it.
Perfect, perfect.
I have videotape for delivery, I will, I will, if that's what I need to do--
Perfect.
You're going to see--
Okay.
I will report it to the building. Is it the building commissioner?
Yep.
That I report to?
Yep.
Okay.
Building inspector, okay, good. Okay, so I can't get anywhere with that. All right, so, Ernie? Make your motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the modifications to the 707 Ponson Street, Norwood Gulf. The moving of the two handicap spaces and one general space.
Short-term.
Short-term parking space. Relocation of those spaces. I make a motion to approve that, as well as the applicant will work with the fire department and the Department of Public Works to come up with a...
You make it any separate, or you're doing them all?
No, do all in one.
You're not gonna put them all in one?
Do all in one, because we've already gone through them individually. This one would be to work with the DPW and the fire department to come up with a suitable line of demarcation or a physical barrier between the right-of-way and the property owner's property on the Ponson Street. The third would be that, within three months, a signed landscape plan will be submitted to the planning department that will reflect all the original decision plantings from the 2023 decision, and that the planner and the applicant will work on language to remove the addition that was granted special permit by the zoning board of appeals from the site plan approval decision. Is that the second one?
At your occasion, are you approving the removal?
I'm approving the removal.
Approving the removal and leaving it to the planner and the applicant's counsel to work on some language?
To work out the language.
To reflect what you're directing.
Those are the, that's my motion, Madam Chair.
That's a, that's a big motion. So you gotta, you gotta take it all, or take...
We just, yeah, we just straw-pulled it all through.
Physical demarcation was not against the employer, so it was against the...
No, physical demarcation is between the... Physical barrier between the town property and the...
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Okay, those were the ones from the sidewalk, go ahead.
Second, yeah.
Hmm. So in your motion, you want it removed, that we didn't?
Yes, correct.
I was really new to the site plan, not building.
God, I wish I would've gone to law school. I'm just not totally comfortable with that one, even though I have no problem with the, what they've done, because it wasn't part of it. But if it was part of our original decision and now we're taking it out, it doesn't feel right.
Madam Chair, was I mistaken?
It doesn't.
It wasn't part of it.
Well, it wasn't, but we're saying that if it wasn't, why are we saying that we're taking it out? See, this is, this is my dilemma.
It's not being excluded, it's just not part of this site plan.
I get it, but I don't particularly like it. Okay, I don't wanna belabor it. No, I can't, I can't let you explain to me again, because my head's gonna blow up.
If you watch the tape, we see, I get up and said, "It's not part of the proposal."
I understand that. I understand that it's not part of the proposal. I remember the case, that you put it in there because that was what you were gonna do.
We were thinking of it, yeah.
Okay, yet you didn't want it, you were being upfront about it. The point is, it got in there. And now, and now just taking it out doesn't feel right.
It's an opportunity to correct an error.
Tell me again what you got, Sarah, please, on these.
You want me to go over them again?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving the three spots.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Putting a physical barrier.
And we don't have anything to say about the physical barrier? We're gonna let DPW do that?
The applicant is gonna work with the Department of Public Works and the fire department to come up with something appropriate for safety. The landscape plan, within three months, will be turned into the planning office with a certified landscape plan, reflecting the original landscaping from the 2023 decision.
Ah.
And the fourth one would be the removal of any wording of the zoning board of appeals decision on the...
It would just be reference to the addition.
Referencing to the addition.
Referencing to the addition.
The addition.
We're moving any reference to the addition as being part of, removing from the site plan decision the waiting room addition.
Yeah, so that's, that's it, now again, again, in a nutshell.
What does this have...
Motion, the second.
What does this have to be, Sarah? It has to be, because there's only four of us, does it have to be unanimous?
This is not a majority vote.
The site plan, majority vote, okay, all right. All right, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
She has a second?
There was a second already.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bring him on. Thank you very much.
Okay. Minutes? We have one sheet of minutes?
No, no, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. One minute. Jesus. 65 Nahaton Street, parcels 1811, 82. All right. Who's referring, is that you, Mr. Hearn?
Where are we, on Crosspoint?
Uh, 65 Nahaton Street, yes, I'm sorry, I almost forgot you there.
They're coming.
What, how do you call that, Debbie?
Crosspoint.
Nahaton. Nahaton Street.
Nahaton. Nahaton Street. Nahaton Street.
We're going to the house for the summer.
It's the hot. Is it Nahanton? Is that how you people say it? Nahanton?
There is a Nahanton in Newton, I think.
Yeah.
Hey, I call Shaz Lounges, Shaz Lounges, too.
There's a no-nan. There's the old totem pole, my dad used to dance.
That sounds like a strip drink, huh?
No.
It still sounds like a strip drink.
Where's this at?
The totem pole.
It was right on the brusque boy there. Where it's at Mary.
Isn't it?
Hands go to the totem pole.
I prefer to bring things up electronically, because nobody online can see them easily.
There's gotta be a better, better way to do this, so that...
But I do have everything that is part of the application, so if there's something in particular you'd like me to bring up?
I think we should just, we'll keep it, once we open the hearing, we'll just use sheets two and three. I don't think we need much more than that.
Thank you for picking that up. Okay. 65 Nahaton Street.
There you go.
Nahaton Street. Just tell us who you are, please, and go.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is David Mackwell with Kelly Engineering Group. Kelly Engineering Group prepared the plans in front of the planning board tonight. Tonight, we're here for a preliminary subdivision approval for the properties located at 63 to 65 Nahaton Street, which is just off of Route 1 interchange. Existing there today, the existing lot is about 28.75 acres. It's located in the Providence Highway zoning district. Current building is vacant, the old industrial building, the old Tyco building. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to request approval, preliminary approval of a subdivision to create two lots and a very small roadway. Roadway would be about .4 acres, one lot would be three acres, and the remaining land would be 23.35 acres. And we don't believe we need any waivers from the planning board to get this approval. With the planning board's preliminary approval, the applicant may move forward to a definitive subdivision. And this is, that's it, it's a two-lot, one-small roadway, preliminary subdivision. And the planning board, I think back in 2003, acted on something very similar, as it had moved forward to a definitive stage at that time.
On the same property?
Same property, same plan.
I remember that.
Maybe you gotta remember.
You have, what, two years to act on, is that correct, Sarah?
Um, I don't know exactly what we have to act on. Just the preliminary subdivision requires the following up with a definitive.
Within seven months of the filing of approval, after the preliminary.
Right.
The preliminary's approved, we move forward with the definitive within seven months.
Seven months, okay.
Yeah. If we don't, then it just dies on the line, which is what happened, I think, in 2023.
Yep.
Was it the same plan, 2023? Same, same?
Pretty much the identical plan.
Yeah, looks like it.
Okay. Questions?
Trying to remember what we asked before.
You get to ask him this one, I think.
Sorry, I'll shut up.
No, you get to ask, kinda.
Yeah, I know.
So you're just working on something that's... Something that lapsed, and you're just coming forward again, pretty much?
Yep, that's it.
You got anything?
Well, my other question is, maybe just my own lack of knowledge on it. There's a fact that we're showing on Lot A, we're showing like a cul-de-sac in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you, you have plenty of frontage on Nahaton Street. I mean, what is, what is the purpose of showing the cul-de-sac?
Well, the definitive subdivision...
What am I missing, I'm missing something?
Definitive subdivision process does multiple things through state subdivision control law. And what that does is it freezes the zoning for uses and dimensional requirements for a timeframe if you move forward. An A&R plan, I think, would get you three years, maybe, of use secured. A definitive subdivision freezes all zoning. If you go through the definitive subdivision process, freezes all the zoning for, I think, it's eight years.
Oh, eight versus three?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's, I know an A&R plan that also freezes zoning, I just didn't...
Yeah.
Not as long and not as well.
Right, not as long, not as well. So I think it's the uses, A&R would secure uses for three years. A definitive subdivision would secure setbacks, uses, and particulars of the zoning.
There you go. That's it?
Okay. Derek's got a question?
Sure, so the cul-de-sac, is that designed or dimensioned for fire engine?
Yes.
Truck that go through, and that's why that's there?
Yep.
All right.
So, and that would all be further vetted if we filed a definitive subdivision? We would again visit all the zoning bylaws and also the subdivision regulations, and apply for any waivers if we needed them for sidewalks. We would be showing the truck turnarounds, work with the fire department for citing hydrants, and possibly vet potential allotting, you know, of any other features of the site.
All right.
That's the standard cul-de-sac for the subdivision regulations.
For two, two houses, right?
Just two lots, no proposed houses.
Two lots, no, okay, sorry, two lots. And you've got a placeholder. Okay? I don't even have any questions. Isn't that amazing?
You're not trying to question landscaping?
They struck out there a lot when I was a little league, as a kid. It was a baseball field.
It was a baseball field.
It was a nice one, too.
Is this a bullpen?
It was invisible from the street, not that many years ago.
No, it's not a public hearing, okay? Okay? I could be wrong.
I don't know.
I don't have to, it's not a public hearing, I just, right? So we're good, no questions from the board?
It is a hearing.
It is not a hearing.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, but not a hearing.
A definitive would be a public hearing.
But you do have to take a vote.
I do have to take a vote, right, but I don't have to open it up or talk to anybody online, correct?
The motions will prove.
Second?
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public, uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You look scared.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1695.92]